All right, we're all set. We'll call the meeting to order. It's 6:23. I'm Adam Carroll and Mr. Meekins, School Board Counsel, is sitting over here. So we're calling the meeting to order for the annual reorganization and the first moment -- or the first agenda item after the call to order is a moment of silence. So we'll observe that now, please. Mr. Lamb will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Lamb, would you read the mission statement?
The mission of the Fourth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. The next item is the attendance, and I'll call the roll. Ms. Allen?
President.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Ms. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
President.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
Ms. Schumake?
President.
Ms. Williams?
President.
And Mr. Parent?
President.
All are in attendance. The next item is the consideration of the agenda, January 9, 2020. Has the agenda been received and is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval, second.
And I'll take the roll call vote. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
And Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Parent?
Yes.
All right, the vote is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the designation of the presiding officer until election of the chair, and the -- after the election of the chair, then the meeting would be turned over to the chair at that point. Is there a commotion on the designation of the officer?
I move that we make Mr. Carroll the acting chairman until said time where we have a chair of our board.
Second.
Ms. Allen, second. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Parent?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the chair of the school board. The way the election procedures operate is there is a nomination period. Nominations do not need to be seconded. Once the nomination is closed, then I'll announce the nominated members for the chair position, and after that point, it'll go into a vote. The vote's by roll call vote. The way the roll call vote will operate is when we go through the roll call, you will say the name of the member that you're voting for. It may be a little cumbersome, but it's the way that the roll call vote operates and are the rules. And at that point in time, assuming there is a majority, we'll have an elected chairman. If there is no majority at the end of the roll call vote, we will vote again, and at the conclusion of that vote, if there is still no majority, it continues to vote until three are done, and the lowest one -- the lowest amount of votes will drop off for a revote at that point in time. So with that being said, are there nominations for chair of the board? I nominate Claude Parent.
I nominate Angela Allen.
Thank you.
Hearing no further nominations, I intend to close the nominations absent any further ones. All right, so hearing none. The nominees for a chair of the school board is Claude Parent and Angela Allen. We will now offer an opportunity to Mr. Parent or Ms. Allen to make any statements that they would like to the board in support of their chairmanship.
I defer to Mr. Parent first.
Okay, Ms. Allen.
I want to thank the board for the last four years that you have given me confidence and responsibility of being chair. My priorities have always been and always will be, you know, after spending 40 years working with children and the last nine years on this board, working to advocate for children. There are times, you know, when Dr. Bracy and I have had to get a little tough because we have to, as a board, to advocate for our children, for our students, and for our parents in the community. There are times when we've just come to an impasse with working with city council that it may appear that it may be that the board or the chair, the relationship, and we have met so many times with, you know, with the liaisons and with the mayor and so forth and the city manager. There is just a lot of work that a chair has to do. I get four weeks of vacation. Two weeks of my vacation is I have to take to do the extra work as the chair, and I enjoy it. And if you so desire for me to continue, excuse me, I will be glad to do that. If you so desire for Ms. Allen to be chair, then of course, obviously, I'm going to support whatever this board. But we don't -- I think we've made a good team. We've all worked together. Dr. Bracy and I have a great relationship, and we just need to forge ahead and keep doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Allen.
Number one, thank you, Board Member Barnes, for, again, suggesting me for the second year in a row, and I've appreciated what Board Member Parent has done for the board during his tenure. I understand that it is a lot of hard work. I'm prepared to do the hard work. I'm prepared to dig in. I'm prepared to do what's necessary to move our school division forward. I would hope, in consideration of me becoming the chair, that we keep in mind that we need to function as a unit, and functioning as a unit means that we all are on one accord and that we all know what our plans are. I think that moving forward, there's opportunity for us to be even stronger as a united front, and I think that happens when we have better communication, and that's what I think I will bring to the table, a little bit different type of communication moving forward, so that we all speak as one voice, but we also know what that voice is going to say prior to the public saying it. So I would appreciate consideration of your vote. As always, I believe in the democratic process. Whatever the will of the board is, that's how I will move accordingly. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Allen. So again, as a reminder, when we move into the election, we'll call it by roll call vote, and you'll, I guess, announce the name of the nominee for the chair that you are voting for, and I'll announce the tally at the conclusion of the vote. Ms. Allen?
Angela Allen.
Ms. Atkinson?
Claude Parent.
Mr. Barnes?
Angela Allen.
Ms. Hines?
Angela Allen.
Mr. Lamb?
Angela.
Reverend Patillo?
Mr. Parent.
Ms. Schumake?
Claude Parent.
Ms. Williams?
Claude Parent.
Mr. Parent?
Claude Parent.
The tally is five votes from Mr. Parent, four ballots votes from Ms. Allen, majority controls, and Mr. Parent has elected the chair of the school board.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you again for the opportunity to serve you at this time. The next item on the agenda is the election of the vice chair of the school board. Do we have nominations for vice chair?
Nominate Cardale Patillo.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes.
I nominate Angela.
Thank you.
Any other nominations? Hearing no nominations, the nomination's closed at this time. Madam Clerk, well, give them an opportunity, excuse me, to --
Ms. Allen wants to go first?
I defer to the incumbent first.
Okay. Reverend Patillo, make your comments.
Not going to be long. Thank you for the nomination, Ms. Williams. I look forward to working in any capacity the board has me. I've enjoyed working alongside Mr. Parent for the past 12 months, and if you'll have me back, then I'll be glad to fill that role once more. Thank you.
Ms. Allen.
I believe in succession planning. I've always talked about succession planning, and in order to have a succession plan, and I think you have to be present. I'm going to be honest, my concern is that there's been numerous absences of our vice chair here. I understand we all work and we all have a multitude of things to do, but I also think that it's important that when we do the work of the people in this room where we vote, that we are present. So with that said, as we move forward, I will, of course, yield to the will of the board, but again, I will be present.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Angela Allen.
Ms. Atkinson?
Patillo.
Mr. Barnes?
Allen.
Mrs. Hines?
Allen.
Mr. Lamb?
Allen.
Reverend Patillo?
Patillo.
Mrs. Schumake?
Patillo.
Mrs. Williams?
Patillo.
Mr. Parent?
Patillo.
I have yes votes for Reverend Patillo for Ms. Allen. Reverend Patillo is standing by. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the election of the clerk of the school board. Do we have nominations for the clerk of the school board?
Nominate Kathy Chalmers.
I second. I will need a second. I'm sorry.
Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations? The nominations are now closed. Ms. Chalmers, would you like to make your annual speech?
[laughing].
Would you mind?
I'm not a public speaker, I'm sorry. Thank you all very much for thinking out. I believe I'm doing a good job, so I thank you so much for electing me again.
Excellent job.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes, Kathy Chalmers.
Mr. Barnes?
I'm only going to vote yes if we can give her a raise. So yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Let me think about it long and hard, yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the deputy clerk of the school board. Do we have a nomination for the deputy clerk?
I nominate Brenda Stewart.
Brenda Stewart has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the nomination's closed. Ms. Stewart, do you want to give your annual rah rah other than?
Just might just say, I appreciate you all electing me before, and I would like to continue on if it's your will. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines? Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's authority. Do you have the resolution before you?
Move for approval. Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Chalmers?
Next item on the agenda is the agent and deputy agent.
May I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
On the agenda just has Mr. Falk as agent. We don't -- and never mind. Sorry, I thought it was saying nominated by. It would help if I could read quickly. Sorry.
Consideration to a point.
Yes.
Mr. Falk?
Move for approval, second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hines and second by Atkinson. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Absolutely.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is the appointment of the superintendent's designate. Do you have that before you?
Move for approval, second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Atkinson. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is the election of a delegate and an alternate to the annual convention. Last year, the SBA delegates, Salin was the delegate and Ms. Hines was the alternate.
I'm willing to serve in that capacity again if so desired.
As am I.
Okay.
I move for approval that Ms. Allen be the designate and Ms. Hines be the assistant.
Okay.
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Made.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo and then Mr. Barnes. All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion?
Mr. Lamb?
Lamb, I'm sorry, Mr. Lamb. Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk?
Hi, twin. Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the director and alternate to the governor's school. Last year, Reverend Patillo was the director and Ms. Allen was the alternate. What is the board's pleasure? Yes, ma'am?
When does the governor's board meet?
Right before CSAP.
Which is?
I know we do every other month.
Yeah. Well, every other month, every two months.
Like 10:00 AM, 9:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay. Just say I'd be interested in it, however, that is a day. Yeah, no. Just curious, thank you.
So Reverend Patillo and Ms. Allen will be the alternate.
Move for approval for Patillo as director and Angela as delegate?
All right.
Alternate?
Vote.
Second.
And Mr. Lamb, second. There you go, Mr. Lamb. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is the election of a representative and an alternate to WHRO Governing Board of Directors. Last year, Ms. Lakeisha Atkinson was our representative and Mr. Lamb was the alternate. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval with Ms. Atkinson as head and Mr. Lamb as alternate.
Second.
Which one's second? I guess, Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams. All right. Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of a representative and alternate to CSAP. Last year, Ms. Allen was the representative and Reverend Patillo was the alternate. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval if it's okay with the people that are in those positions.
Okay.
Second.
Did you get the second?
Second.
Yes. Hearing no other discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the election of Representative Access College Foundation. Last year, it was Ms. Atkinson, and the alternate was Ms. Hines. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made, and was made by Ms. Williams and second by Reverend Patillo.
I thought it was motion by Ms. Hines and second by Mrs. Williams.
Okay, doesn't matter.
That's whatever.
Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please, roll call vote.
Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of a representative and alternate to CUBE. Last year, we had Ms. Schumake as the representative, Mr. Barnes as the alternate. What's the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
As Ms. Schumake and Mr. Barnes.
All right. Reverend Patillo made the -- and second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. The special committees and assignments, the subcommittees and the special committees, if you will email me, last year, I'll just read them. Reverend Patillo and I had Norley, the chairman, and the vice chair on the budget finance. Also, the city council liaison is the chair and the vice chair. Corporate sponsorships were Atkinson and Barnes. Curriculum and instruction was Williams and Hines. Human resources was Williams and Schumake. Legislation and policy was Williams and Allen. Minority contractors was Ms. Williams and Atkinson. And technology was Mr. Lamb and Patillo. The CTE advisory board was Hines and Schumake. The student disciplinary ad hoc committee was Parent and Atkinson, and the wellness committee was Lamb and Barnes. If you'd like to serve on any other committee, or please email me, because I'd like to give this back to you on the 23rd when we meet. Okay?
Is it going to be worth it?
Sir?
Is it going to be worth emailing?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know last year, I sat in here and told you which ones I was interested in, and you told me because I haven't been up here long enough, I pretty much couldn't get what I wanted, even though I had requested. So I just wanted to know before I send you this email, is it a waste of my time, or am I -- do you already have people that you're going to put in these places?
I'll look at this as previous chairmans do, because that is one of the responsibilities of the chair, and as I told you, I had to wait three years before I ever got the one that I wanted.
Why must we do what we've done, what we've done previously? Why can't we do something new?
Well, I understand that, but I was just giving you a reason, because you asked me.
I don't think that was a good reason.
Okay. Well, all right, I accept that, and just email me your preference to serve on the committees, and I will take that under consideration. The next item is the discussion of the agenda for the 23rd. You have a copy of the agenda. It's discussion, so if there's any other items that you would like to add to the agenda on the 23rd, please. All right, Ms. Allen.
Previous meeting, I requested information about attendance. I don't see that as a discussion point here.
Okay.
That would be in the early session. It would be in the early session.
It is going to be in the early session?
Yes.
Add it to this agenda? So when we vote on this, are we voting with an amendment to add it to this as a discussion point?
Yeah, we can add that to attendance to the early session, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We did say, when you brought it up, that we would do it at the regular meeting in January.
Okay, I just didn't see it listed.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll add it.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. On the agenda, we've got a 13.3, a contract, a placeholder there. Is that going to be a contract for the rezoning RFP that we're looking at? And if we don't have a contract for that, then can I have an update on the RFP for zoning? And either to -- I mean, I'm not expecting it tonight, but if you have it off the top of your head. But if we don't, if we're not voting on a contract for the rezone issue, I'd like at least an update and a discussion.
We'll have that for you.
Okay.
Okay. Still, Lamb?
Yes. I know we've talked about this on and off a little bit, and one meeting, we were probably just close of getting somewhere and making a decision, but I think that I would like for us to, if we can get it on this agenda, to come back to decide how we're going to do the discipline hearings, if we're going to keep it the same, or if we're going to go over to a committee status. You know, as you said, Chairman Parent, the last couple months, and I think I've even heard Ms. Williams even say that we've been fortunate that there wasn't a backlog, but I think before we get back in that situation again, we just need to make a decision how we're going to do it, what we're going to do.
And you know, that goes to a three-panel board, and you make the decision, comes back to the board, and we, the last time we discussed this, we all agreed that we would want to have the full board. So we can certainly add this to the agenda and have it discussed.
Discuss and even set up that three-panel, I mean, you know.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
I thought the last discussion, the last thing we recommended, that it would be the board.
That's correct.
Right, so we said that was it. So to, I mean, I thought that was the discussion.
No, I thought even Chairman Parent just said here that we were talking about having a possibly a three-person panel, and then it could go to the full board if need be. I mean, that's what I'm just saying, clarification of what exactly are we doing or not doing?
Well, we, as a board, said it would be the full board, and that was it.
That's what I thought. Some people weren't comfortable with three people making a decision, was what I thought was the final outcome.
There are advantages and disadvantages to it.
Both ways.
We've been, I think we've been very fortunate this year that we have not had a backlog, and so. I think you can change it at any time when we see that there's a problem. Yes, ma'am?
If we are uncomfortable with moving it to a three-person board, is there a way that we could call a meeting on an alternate Thursday and handle it in between meetings so that we're not sitting at five and six weeks out for? I mean, because, I mean, and I go back to that year where we had like 19 cases, and I mean, and that, we were here for three nights until 10:30, 11 o'clock, but we've also had issues where because of the breaks and the way everything falls, we're not meeting, school's not in session. But if we can see that we've got three or four coming in, and it's going to be a long span, why can we not call an emergency meeting, get a quota, come in on a Thursday night and get it done so that they are not out for another two or three weeks before, you know, they can make it here? I understand that there's processes in place on the student and the administration side, but once we get resolution, if we, to me, I would feel more comfortable coming in on an alternate Thursday, coming in, getting it done, rather than having them sit out.
Right. Ms. Williams?
And I thought we agreed to that, that if we needed a special meeting?
We did.
That we would call the special meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. We have that flexibility that if we see that there's a backup of seven, that we would call a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, the next.
Oh, one other one. I'm sorry, and I'm just reading down my notes, because I'm to the point where I have to write everything down. When we do the budget update, is there any way possible that we could have somebody from the Funding Formula team that goes and meets in these meetings, come and give us what the feel of the discussions are since we, since we're there and they're in the room and we're not? I'd like to hear from somebody that's in the room so they can give us an update, so.
You've got the superintendent? You've got Mr. Falk? You've got the superintendent, you've got Mr. Falk, you've got.
I'm not.
No. It's you and Mr. Falk.
Yeah, it's the Bridgeford and Dr. Roberts.
Right. We could certainly invite Mr. Bridgeford and Dr. Roberts. And you've got Mr. Falk and.
I just hate to put these two gentlemen on the spot because they do more with the city than just the Funding Formula.
We can invite Mr. Bridgeford to come and, and Mr. Rob, Dr. Roberts. Absolutely.
Okay. Just a, a different view and a different voice.
Would you mind putting that on there and asking them if they can come?
So would this be at the next?
Yes. It would be the 23rd and it would be the early meeting.
So don't forget, we have a.
The budget update.
We have a presentation which is probably gonna be about half an hour.
Thirty minutes.
From ODU.
Thirty minutes and then we go into close.
And we've got two cases.
And we've got the rezoning, the rezoning update as well as the attendance presentation.
Can we, we can bump it to February. I'm okay with that. I just, I hate to put these gentlemen on the spot.
Right.
Okay. We can do that. We'll do it in the.
Early meeting in February? Okay. Is that all right with Ms. Atkinson?
Can you refresh me again on the Student Activity Fund? I think, I don't recall seeing that. What, what, it says audit? What's, what's the audit? The Student Activity Fund Audit? I don't think I've ever seen that.
That one, that one would have come with the regular financial audit, but with everything with the city, the same audit firm brings those both at the same time. That's why we haven't presented that one yet. That one is, is completed, but we wanna do them both together. So we're working with the auditors to try to get the audit done with everything going on with the city and all the, the risk management stuff. So hopefully, we'll have that done. I don't have an ETA right now because we have to coordinate with the city to get everything together because our numbers flow into their financial statements. So until they're ready to present theirs, we won't have all of our things finalized, so.
For the activity fund?
No, the activity funds is, is completed.
Okay, that one.
Yeah. But normally, the audit firm comes at one time and presents them both to you.
Okay. Because that was my first time seeing that. I've never seen that one before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The bookkeepers like that, don't they, Mr. Falk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is consideration of proposed changes to the superintendent's contract. And you have a copy of, you've had a copy of that. Need to know the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Williams?
She moved that.
Atkinson moved that second.
Okay. Did you get that?
Atkinson and Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Allen?
I would like to see the contract discussed after the annual retreat where we do the evaluation and get the accreditation numbers. The current contract is good until 2022, so with any business, I would prefer to see, see what our numbers are next year after a proper evaluation and then move towards discussion of a new contract.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Pann?
I, I would like to agree with Ms. Allen at the fact that the current contract runs through 2022. And I think it's a better conversation about contract and evaluation at the same time rather than them sitting six months apart. So I, I think that's a great idea and it, it could be discussed then.
Ms. Toya?
I, I concur. Again, this contract is two years out. There are some changes in here with regards to instruction. I believe it was, most of this was because of, because of new wording and so forth that had come down. I understand that, but there's, it's not that there's any moves or any reason why it would have to be approved this evening. So I agree with my colleagues that I think this could wait until after the formal assessments and where we stand as far as accreditation numbers.
Now, under the term of employment, it says the board agrees to continue the, to employ the superintendent from July 1, 2019 through June 30 of 2023. That's what you're voting for. Yes, ma'am?
So I guess I, I will respectfully disagree with my, my board members. I think since Dr. Bracy has been superintendent and in the short amount of time that he's been superintendent, we've seen significant growth in Portsmouth Public Schools from seven schools accredited to, by the new accreditation, all schools are accredited. He's won the state superintendent on top of other city and other state accolades that was, he was nominated for. And that's not us nominating him, that's other people saying the great things that he's doing at Portsmouth Public Schools. Outside of just looking in at other city superintendents, he has a rapport with the students. I travel and visit other schools' systems and students will tell you they don't even know they're superintendent. You can go in any Portsmouth Public School and ask who is the superintendent, the kids would say Dr. Bracy. So that alone gives me trust in him, that he will continue to move Portsmouth Public Schools forward. So I support him. He's not asking for much. It's a competitive market. With superintendents, a lot of school systems are missing superintendents and I'm pretty sure other school systems have reached out to him. So I wouldn't slight him at all and allow another school division to pay him probably 20% more than what we could offer him. So I support Dr. Bracy.
So?
I don't want to leave here with the thought process that because I'm determining that as a decision that we wait until we have an evaluation and our accreditation numbers that number one, I don't support Dr. Bracy and number two, I don't value it. That's not true. I firmly agree with Board Member Atkinson that Dr. Bracy has been a wonderful addition of Portsmouth Public Schools. However, with any job, when you're looking at doing something, you do it in, in order. And in order would be an evaluation, we find out our accreditation numbers and then we move forward there. To me, I equate it as asking somebody to support me two years from now, not knowing what's happening from two years from now. There is a perfectly good contract here. He's not asking for an increase in salary. So it's not a money issue. It's just a order issue that we wait until we have our accreditation and our, our evaluation and go from there. I do support Dr. Bracy. I do believe that he's done excellent things for the school board. This is about order. This isn't anything other than that for me.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yeah. I, I have to agree with Board Member Atkinson. Dr. Bracy has moved this division in the forward position. He's not asking for an increase. I, I think he's asking for stability and confidence from this board. And because of the turmoil, the constant turmoil that he has to encounter in working with the city council, I think that we need to do whatever we can to keep a good superintendent with us. So I will be voting in favor for those reasons. And I do believe this is indecency and in order. And the only way to me, if I were superintendent, he's superintendent, the only way that I know that you have confidence in me is how you vote.
Right.
And when you vote no, that says to me that although you're reasoning, but it does tell me that you are not interested. So that's.
Mr. Barnes?
Well, I'm voting no. And I'm voting no because I've talked to cafeteria workers, I've talked to janitors, I've talked to a lot of our lower, lower end staff. And I just can't personally vote to, to give some of those benefits that's in the contract when I see two weeks, our, our staff off for two weeks, they can't pay their rent and they're getting kicked out of their house. That doesn't mean I don't support them. I think I've shown Dr. Bracy enough that I support him in a lot of the things that I've done. So to, to say that you don't vote for a contract means you don't support somebody. I think that's crazy. So I'm voting no for those reasons.
Ms. Atkinson?
And, and just to piggyback from Mr. Barnes, I think it needs to be said that you asked for a competitive pay structure from Dr. Bracy on how we weigh with other school divisions. And in reference to some school divisions, we do rank not last in paying our cafeteria workers. I was glad that you asked for that because I wanted to see that. We're not the lowest paid in paying those lower end workers. So I just wanted to have that on the record that we're not ranked low. And if anybody would like to see that, I will put that out on my social media page as well.
And that's correct, but I would like to see us rank number one. And also, I would like to see us setting the standard with a little higher pay for those staff members.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just want to, when, when I say no, it's not about Bracy. There are a few things in this contract that give me heartburn. And one of them has to do with a termination clause that's in here because that termination clause comes out of risk management. Currently, we are not in control of our own risk management. And that risk management fund also houses our employee risk management benefits as well. And we know that by not being re-appropriated, our risk management fee is low. So there's a lot of, I have a lot of heartburn with that one particular paragraph. It's not about the person because we've, we've gone to bat for Dr. Bracy and there have been people at this, at this board that have voted no on a contract for this man before that are gonna vote yes tonight. So there's technical pieces in this. It's not necessarily about supporting the person because I've taken as many hits, if not more, supporting this man, backing up this man, making sure that Portsmouth Public Schools has the same voice and we are supporting because when it comes down to it, we are here for the students and we're here to move the division forward. But I do have a, a technical piece of this because we are not in charge of our own risk management.
Okay. Reverend Patello?
I just want to say that I'm supporting the contract based on his evaluation that was conducted in August, which I believe it earned merit enough for him to get a contract extension at that time. I believe it was a month later or a month and a half later after the evaluation that the contract proposal came up. So it came up in order based on that current evaluation.
That is correct.
Looking at the paragraph you're referencing, Ms. Hines, that paragraph is only if you terminate a superintendent without cause.
Right.
Correct.
Which I think would be unethical for any board to do anyway. And that's a normal termination clause in almost every superintendent agreement across this Commonwealth.
I, I get that. I'm just saying, we, we've, we've gone, and it doesn't matter if it's with cause is, you know, or with, with or without cause, we still have to go to risk management.
Right, but that paragraph is with cause, though.
Correct. But both of them. If we were to terminate one way or the other, what we're dipping into is what we don't have control over and what we're in a shortfall in right this minute as well. I understand that wording has to be in there, but at this moment where we sit at this table, I feel like I'm binding our boards and other city council renditions to a decision that we're making at this moment in time. And that, that's, that's my heartburn. It's not necessarily performance, it's not evaluation. It's, it's a technical piece of a contract that I would love, I, I would love to say that yes, I can control all these pieces and right this minute, I cannot.
Since all of you have had the opportunity to voice your, the chair gets the, the chair gets to voice his opinion. It has been my pleasure to work alongside with Dr. Bracy for the last three, four years. There have been a lot of battlegrounds that you have no idea. This man has stood up for this school system. He's had numerous opportunities, which has given me. Heartburn. To leave. And for us as a board to be sitting here tonight, and this is my opinion, please understand, this is my opinion, for us as a board not to vote, to make, to vote a unanimous agreement of this contract, has some concerns for me. Dr. Bracy has, when he got, got here, he had, and Mr. Lamb was with him, walking down the streets, PTA. And this man has not stopped. We've gone from six schools, now we're at, we're at 16. We've got a little bit more to go and I'm looking forward to his, his dance. And I think that we send to the community when we vote tonight, our support of our superintendent. And it has been a pleasure and an honor to work beside this man. He and I have taken some hits that you have no idea. I don't have to come to the board and tell you every little thing that people have said and the battles that we have privately had to fight, but we have. And, and also with our vice chair. There are times when, you know, when the school board, because we are, all of us, all of us are elected officials and the city council are elected officials. And when you get to a point where, it hurt me, I'm, and I don't know if y'all have had the opportunity to watch the last city council early meeting where a city council member said that we do things under the table. Now, I'm gonna tell you as a, as a board member. Not as chair. But I'm gonna address that with that city council member. We do not do things under the table. You're talking about everyone is sitting around this table. You're talking about our integrity when you make a statement that this board does things, can do things under the table. We've gone through this whole thing with being hauled into the grand jury, the famous grand jury report. I'm done with that. There is an audit that we've got national attention and state attention and we are recognized as an outstanding school board. And I can only say to you, there's, there's, you have no idea the amount of hours this man spends. And all you need to know is that he takes, he has the opportunity to take 24 days of vacation and he does not because this man's working. And he's working on your behalf and he's working on behalf of the students, the employees and the citizens of this community. And it is my honor to vote yes for this contract. Do we have any other discussion? Here are no more discussion. Madam Clerk?
Just, just one more thing. And I just want to say, I, I really don't feel like Dr. Bracy should be measured on like budget-related issues, especially if our city is not funding the schools.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, that's, that's unfair to, to him. I'm pretty sure if we had funding from the schools, Dr. Bracy would not have any issue with giving any person that's under him a raise, especially our, our lower end staff. So I think that's unfair when we don't have the support of the city to put that on.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Reverend Patello?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
Five yes votes for, no, it passes.
I do have one question. Can I interrupt real quick? When we talk about the pay for those that are not teachers or administrators for the two weeks, are we not paying them those two weeks?
No.
Because I, because I know.
No, we don't pay the.
Five years ago.
She says, yes.
No, they get, they get their previous check, but they don't get, like, for instance, a cafeteria, a cafeteria worker, they doesn't get, they don't get paid for those two.
We fought hard for that.
We changed that.
Oh, yeah, we changed that.
We, and so I'm confused because I, I know the discussion.
The staff members that I spoke with said that they don't get paid for those two weeks. two weeks.
We, we fought hard for that back.
Because that is a.
I'm talking about Christmas break. They didn't get.
Yeah. We authorized two weeks of, of, of two weeks of pay.
They're not giving you right information. Ms. Durin?
So, they get, they get a standard pay for, for not working?
Yeah. Ms. Durin?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to be back. Um, the, for the two weeks that were to break, our 10-month employees who are hourly did get paid for the, that, for the last five years, I think it was at least five. Yes, sir.
So, what exactly, could you explain to me exactly what the 10-month employee?
Um, a person who works in the cafeteria as an example.
Is that full-time or part-time?
Well, if they're part-time, they wouldn't necessarily work the 10 months, but.
Well, that's what I'm speaking of. That's this person is part-time.
A part-time person could be a coach or a.
Get paid anywhere you want.
No, you wouldn't.
No, at any.
Even at my job.
So, you're talking about a part-time person?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think part-time people are paid for holidays or when they don't work.
No.
No, they're.
Right. Well, that's what I'm speaking of.
That's not anywhere in America. I don't think.
But the people that do work full-time.
Do get it.
Yes. Do get that benefit even though they're not at work. Those full-time members that get that because there's several of us around this table that we went to bat for them.
You better believe it.
And it's a, and it's a huge, and I'm, I'm not saying it's a huge budgetary expense, but it's 1.2 to 1.5 million.
It is a huge.
For that. So, and that's, and we always, and, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. All right.
I want to, um, thank the members of the board for the, the vote of confidence and the, the work that I'm doing. I, I enjoy being here in Port because I enjoy being superintendent. I enjoy interacting with the community and doing what I can to help our students succeed. So, I'm going to continue to do that. And in the same vein, nothing will change because that's the type of person that I am. I will make sure that our students are first and I'll make sure that our staff and teachers are supported. And thank you again for the vote of confidence. And with that, I was going to introduce, uh, Jessica Durin, welcome her back, which she's already here. And I'd like to introduce, uh, Dr. Jerry Simmons, the new director of auxiliary services.
Go ahead.
No. Thank you all for being here. And, and with my job, it's, it's not all me. It's not all me. I have a great staff. I have a great senior staff. I have great directors, principals and, and support staff right here at this table. Yeah. I got to come to work tomorrow. So, yeah, definitely. My right hand, Susan Patterson, absolutely. So, I look for, I love what I do and I love doing it here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And members of the board.
Um, before we adjourn, I want to, um, you all received letters that I forward, forward to you that, you know, this whole thing that we've been dealing with, with risk management. Now, there are two things that I want you to know about. All right. There's $5.1 billion. That's our money. Now, when I went before city council, I took the book that Mr. Falk reviewed with Mr. Ashby of the claims. And we thought that was going to be it, of course, you know how the city council voted. Then right before the holidays, Mr. Falk, and I want you to pick up, um, now they're asking you, your staff, as us as a board, to provide more information. So, would you pick up so that, I want it, I want you to clarify so this board understands what we are against right now, okay?
So, um, you guys obviously saw the, the book that, that we provided. Um, I believe it was Monday the 16th, don't quote me, Monday or Tuesday of the week before, um, before we got out, we received a letter from the, uh, city attorney's office requesting additional information, about a three or four-page letter of additional requests, mainly accounting-related as to cash and accrual basis and things of that nature that really aren't in question in my opinion because everything that we've done has been audited. Uh, even to the point of, of last year after they had, um, taken the 5.1 million, there was a deficit because we gave them unaudited numbers. So, they took the money at the time that everything had been audited to the point of asking, what is this? And we need documentation for that. That's already been audited. So, um, we're evaluating that now to see if any of that needs to be given. Uh, because truthfully, we gave everything that we could have given. And in many of these requests, and even going back as far as FY16, they're asking for certain things. And I mean, again, I, I don't understand that at this point, but we're evaluating as a staff to see if there's anything that necessarily needs to be given. But truthfully, we think it's just more of what shouldn't be given at this point because we've given everything we can give.
Thank you. So, the other thing I want to clear up before, so that we, y'all understand, um, when we had the meeting, when the, the meeting was scheduled with Reverend Patillo and I and the two liaisons, um, Reverend Patillo and I did not, and I'm going to repeat this, we did not change the agenda to reappropriation. All we asked was, could we add risk management to the agenda? Then it came back in our face with a letter, I mean, I was there, he and I were there at 3 o'clock waiting for a meeting. And supposedly, you know, Mr. Clark, if you watched the, the meeting, said that we needed to take care of it on our end because those letters were delivered, uh, sometimes noon or whatever. But Dr. Bracy and the city manager, uh, had been corresponding all day long. So, it had been very easy for the city manager to, to say to the superintendent, you know, we're going to cancel the meeting. But to put it on Reverend Patillo and my, and myself that we were changing the meeting, uh, without having any consultation with the city liaisons, I'm going to tell you, that's not true. That did not happen. Uh, all we were asking is that we, could we, because we, the, the meeting before, we had asked and we had talked about the risk management. That's when, uh, Mr. Falk and Mr. Ashby got together and they said they were going to meet and here's all we, this is all we need. But then after the city council did what they did, we had the meeting scheduled and they canceled it. Uh, so I want you to know as a board, Reverend Patillo and I had nothing to do with changing the agenda. All we asked for, can we add that item? And we got blowback that we, the reason it was canceled is because he and I were going to change the agenda. That is not true. I want y'all to understand that. Now, I've done enough tonight. Uh, board members, do you have any other comments you would make? And Miss Schumake, we're going to be praying for your, um, your daughter. Understand. Uh, any other, any other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
Before we go.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't forget that, uh, Dr. Bracy's being honored on the 20th.
Oh, yes.
So, I don't think we need to, for those that are going.
Oh, I gave my letter. I think if you.
Is that the one that's, that one?
Yeah, the letter.
Yeah.
And the other thing, you've all signed when you're going to do the budget. Where is that?
Yes.
That was.
Ms. Stewart, you have?
I don't have it yet.
Is, I think it's left in the Schu, the Schumake, you've got it.
Yes, I have it.
You've got it. You can put a time. Oh, it's done.
Okay.
Yeah, I've done.
Okay.
And everybody's got their statement.
Although it's a favor to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you copied from the, have you mailed? And I emailed it.
Uh-huh. Wednesday, January 22nd. I'm going to email.
Yes.
I'm going to email everyone.
We had a motion and second, although it's a favor of German.
Aye.
Happy New Year. Thank you.